I would like to call the regular meeting for October 2nd, 2017, for the City Council to order. And we have special people to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance today. We are being led by Marshal Neil Moore of the Fire Department and our special guest, Sparky, and a very special guest, Taylor Stanley. If you'll come to the podium, please, and everyone would please stand.
Do you want to make the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and if you'll just stand right up there for a moment. I do have this, well, normally, we ask our youngest person just a couple of questions. Tori, how did you get lucky enough, Taylor, how did you get lucky enough to accompany Sparky and the marshal? Why don't you go over to the microphone so we can hear you? Go right behind the podium. There you go. Very good.
My dad asked if I wanted to do it.
Your dad asked you if you wanted to do it? And you said you could hardly wait? This was the dream of your life?
Yeah.
Great. Well, we appreciate you being here. How old are you?
Eleven.
And what grade does that make you in?
Sixth.
Sixth grade. How's the middle school this year?
Good.
Good? Is it very hard?
Not in the beginning.
Okay. Are we still in the beginning?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, great. What's your favorite subject?
Math.
Okay. And which math class are you in?
We don't have multiple math classes yet.
Okay. Just plain old numbers. Okay. We do appreciate you being here, Taylor. Councillors, do you have any questions or comments for Taylor?
Thanks for being here.
Okay. Taylor, I do have this gift for you. And I will come down there. And now, you can stand with Sparky and our marshal, Neil Moore. We have a proclamation, which I will read. Whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, as newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home constructions, and many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments. And whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds, and whereas, a home fire escape plan provides the skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation, including two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And, whereas Stillwater's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and public education measures, and, whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts," planned "Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Now therefore, I, Pat Darlington, Vice Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th through 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Stillwater, and urge all citizens to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year, and to support and participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Stillwater's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2017. Here you go. Thank you. Thank you for all your work. Education is huge. Would you like to say anything about the week? Activities?
No, we're just very, very happy to be here and have the opportunity to go out into the public and give education on fire prevention. We'll be going to all the grade schools like we do every year, and Deputy Fire Marshal has worked diligently in coming up with a program to present to all the grade school students, so we look forward to that, and we're very, very proud to serve the community of Stillwater. Thank you.
You don't have to say anything. Thank you. Our second proclamation, Public Power.
Yes.
Yes. We love our Public Power. We're very proud. We love the signs, love the truck out front.
Love the guys that put them up and they're back on them in the morning.
Okay, yeah. It has been a tricky wind. Whereas, we, the citizens of Stillwater, place high value on local control over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned electric utility, and as customers and owners of our electric utility, have a direct say in utility operations and policies. Whereas Stillwater Electric Utility provides our homes, businesses, social service, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, cost-effective electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at competitive rates. And whereas, Stillwater Electric Utility is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through financial support of the general government, including public safety, transportation, parks and recreation, and library. And, whereas Stillwater Electric Utility is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place to live and work, and contributes to protecting the global environment. Now therefore, be it resolved that Stillwater Electric Utility will continue to work to bring low-cost, safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses, just as it has since 1901, the year when the utility was created, to serve all the citizens of Stillwater. And be it further resolved that the week of October 1st through 7th be designated Public Power Week, to recognize Stillwater Electric Utility for its contributions to the community and to educate customer owners, policymakers, and employees on the benefits of public power. Be it therefore resolved that our community joins hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in this celebration of public power, which is best for consumers, business, the community, and the nation. It's Public Power Week. Lauren, would you like to add anything to that?
Thank you. And I'd just like to kind of...
Lauren, if you talk here, the cameras can...
Okay, everybody. Okay, okay. I would just like to thank, we are proud to be your public power provider. The signs say it, so we certainly appreciate everything that you guys do for us and what we do for the citizens. These are some of the hard-working employees that I'd really like to thank. We have some of the hardest-working employees in the nation. These guys do a great job taking care of us, so thank you all, and thank you.
Lauren?
Hey, Lauren.
Lauren, would you like to introduce your crew?
Let everybody introduce themselves from left to right.
Thank you very much. That takes us down to item number four, Consent Docket.
Mayor, I would ask that we pull item H, please. It's not ready to go.
Councillors, do you have any other items you would like to pull?
Motion to approve Consent Docket minus item H.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket minus item H. Please vote. And that passes with a vote of four to zero. Now, we don't have any speakers for public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearings. We don't have to do anything with item six. Takes us to item number seven, public hearings receive public comment regarding the 12th Avenue Land Use Plan, CC-17-143. Mr. McNichol, Mr. Dorman?
We have good notice.
Good notice.
And Paula Dennison, Director of Development Services, will provide the report.
Good evening. Paula Dennison with Development Services Department. What I have before you this evening, there's a lot of information that was included in your packet. The presentation is not that lengthy. This is a request for an amendment to our C-3, or our city's comprehensive plan, and an amendment to land development code. As you can see, outlined in the dark purple with the hatch over it, this is the study area that we have been working on for quite a while. I'll get to the background here in a moment. And this is the area that the notice has been provided for and the area of consideration or the focus this evening. The background, there was a request filed in October of 2016 to rezone some property within the study area from residential, single, small family to office, part of it office and part of it residential, two-family, and multifamily. That request went to Planning Commission and to City Council. The City Council postponed any action on that request in order for a public process to identify if there were changes needed to our comprehensive plan, and that was in January of 2017. That public process concluded in May of 2017, where the Planning Commission reviewed and the City Council reviewed changes to the comprehensive plan for the study area and recommended overlay districts, a neighborhood conservation overlay district and a neighborhood mixed-use overlay district. Again, that was in May of 2017. The City Council remanded the consideration or the item back to the Planning Commission with some specific directions to address. Expand the area for the neighborhood conservation overlay and narrow the scope of the neighborhood mixed-use overlay. So after that May 2017, remand back to Planning Commission for us to work with the neighborhood to do that as directed by the City Council. Neighborhood group developed, worked through the summer, and they did develop a proposal. So within the study area, the neighborhood came back with this proposal that you can see. Again, the study area is what is outlined in the thick outline. The orange on this map is what the neighborhood proposes as the neighborhood conservation overlay district. The green is what is proposed as the neighborhood mixed-use overlay district. And you can see that their proposal goes quite a bit outside of the study area. In the presentation at the Planning Commission, one of the things of note that the Planning Commissioners asked and the neighborhood responded to is, why nothing on the south side of 12th Avenue? That property is already developing as common and compatible with the other properties on the south side of 12th Avenue. So the neighborhood chose not to include it in their proposal. They are working on the north side of 12th Avenue. So this is option one, the neighborhood proposal. The proposal that was remanded, that the City Council saw in May and was remanded back to the Planning Commission, also had a neighborhood conservation overlay as well as the neighborhood mixed-use overlay. However, the areas of those quite different. In the purple is the conservation overlay, and the blue is the neighborhood mixed-use overlay. And this is the, again, the option that was remanded back to the Planning Commission. So at the Planning Commission meeting, held on the 19th of September, they evaluated the proposals that were put before them, including the neighborhood's proposal. And what you will see, the difference between the neighborhood's proposal and what the Planning Commission is recommending to you this evening are some additional lots along the north side of 12th Avenue included in the neighborhood mixed-use overlay area. And the lots in particular are these two, about midway in the easternmost block, the single long lot that runs from 11th to 12th, the corner lot at 12th and Jefferson, and then you cross Jefferson to this individual lot, as well as this lot that fronts on Adams. Those are the only changes made from the neighborhood's proposal to what the Planning Commission is recommending for you this evening. And again, the Planning Commission's recommendation is within the study area. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know that was a very quick run-through of where we have gotten to where we are, but the focus of this within the study area is the neighborhood's proposal, the remanded proposal with those changes that the Council asked us to get with the neighborhood and look at, and then the Planning Commission recommended option. Any questions?
Paul, I'm wondering for the rest of the people who don't have access to the packet, could you just give a brief description of why the Planning Commission made that change?
Certainly. There was quite a bit of discussion amongst the Planning Commissioners, and they began quite divided, some not wanting to address any other properties on the north side of 12th Avenue in the mixed-use overlay district, and then others believed that it would provide opportunity for the community to continue to grow in this vicinity, not necessarily grow into the neighborhood, but grow along that primarily Jefferson area to Washington as a good connection, as you could see, up Washington Street on both sides, that even the neighborhood had proposed. They recognized that there are changes occurring on the south side of 12th Avenue in this vicinity, and those changes can spur some mixed-use commercial-type activities, not solely along Washington Street, but almost sort of making that turn onto 12th Avenue.
Any other questions?
Yeah. One of the issues that came up in our last discussion around the neighborhood conservation overlay was the question of allowing, whereas the underlying zoning doesn't allow for duplexes, but the conservation district, as originally proposed, did allow for duplexes to be built in that overlay. It looked to me like that had been edited.
Yes.
Could you just expound on any other changes that were made to the actual allowed uses in the overlay districts?
Yes, primarily in the neighborhood conservation overlay. The changes you see is exactly that that you mentioned. The duplex was removed as an allowed use by right. Their townhouses were removed. So the only uses that are allowed under the proposal are conventional detached single-family and then whatever home occupations, and those would have to meet the criteria that's existing in city code at the time. They added, because there is one in the area, they added a nursing care facility as a specific use in that conservation overlay. We had a discussion, and they came back, and I believe is the right decision, that the neighborhood proposed to not create such a legal non-conforming use for that existing facility that exists right now. And those are the uses that were changed. They did have some other adjustments to the aesthetic components, bulk standards, et cetera, in the conservation overlay district. In the mixed-use overlay district, there were not a tremendous amount of changes. The discussions that had been held amongst staff and the owners and residents within the study area and those outside over the course of this planning exercise, there were a lot of mixed-use type activities that had been discussed. Those did not end up in the conservation, or excuse me, the mixed-use overlay because the neighborhood felt that many of them, even though they could be complementary to some of the activities going on in the vicinity, might not be as complementary to the conservation or the neighborhood, the residential component. So they were not included in the original text of the mixed-use overlay, and therefore that mixed-use overlay text is not drastically changed.
So I guess my big question about this whole overlay, the residential overlay, is what does it get us, or what is going to be different if you're in it than if you're just in regular RSS? Because I guess I'm not sure what the conservation district adds to the area or takes away from the area. I mean, it seems to me like if we just left it as residential, single-family zoning, as it is now, we'd kind of be the same place we are, right? I mean, what's the difference?
The biggest difference is twofold. This is an additional level of requirements for the underlying properties that are in this overlay district. So we heard loud and clear, protect the neighborhood from the neighborhood. The second thing it does is only in very, very, very few areas of Stillwater are there any design or aesthetic requirements. That's what this also accomplishes. It does place aesthetic requirements on any new structures that are built, additions to structures, et cetera, in this conservation overlay. And once again, working with the property owners and residents in not just the study area, but the expanded area that we noticed, we heard a lot of that. We want greater landscaping requirements. We want parking here as opposed to somewhere else. We want bulk standards, setbacks. How far do you inset your garage, or do you line it up at the house, or is that all you see on the front of your house is your garage? So you have components of that that are not reflected anywhere else in this community primarily.
So the idea is that we're seeing potentially increased demand that is counter to the neighborhood idea in this area, and so what we want to do is put some additional layer on top of it to make sure that we're doing everything we can to conserve it, rather than just, I mean, it's sort of like saying, we're a little worried about it, so we're going to add another layer of requirement.
Regulation, yes. Aesthetic priority, if you will, yes.
Can you, how far west is the recommended, the proposed overlay? I can't, I don't know if I saw that street.
The study area is the half-block in between Pine and Walnut.
Yes, and it goes to Willis? Is that the street on the far west edge of what the proposal is?
Yes, it is. The neighborhood proposal goes to Willis.
And that's what the Planning Commission's proposal does as well?
Yes, it does also. I will note that notification has been provided for the study area. Those were the property owners that notice was sent for, this is a consideration of property you own. And then the notification area, 300 feet, we surpassed that because we included all of the interested citizens throughout the community, et cetera, that we had been working with throughout this planning process. So any action tonight to amend the comp plan or to assign any textual overlay districts is only within the study area. Therefore, the Planning Commission also, reading through your packet, you saw where they sort of mixed two alternatives that they had together. The second one is, they are asking the Council to direct staff to proceed with the notice and the application for this expanded area as reflected on these maps.
Okay, so.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, because that was going to be my question, is with the study area being defined what it is, how was it that the mixed-use overlay ends up extending all the way up Washington Street to 6th? Because my concern would be, are those, given the fact that there's a fair amount of structure and housing along Washington Street, were those people notified, or are they represented in this decision? And so the answer is no to that.
Not for tonight.
So any action we were to take on this tonight would only apply tonight within the study area, and we'd have to come back and do this again for anything we wanted to expand it to outside of the current study area?
That is correct.
Any other questions for Ms. Dennison? Nope. I will open the public hearing now. I would like to remind, we're very happy when people come to speak to us. It's always a pleasure to hear everybody's thoughts. We do have a three-minute, five-minute time limit, and we ask that if you have...
Good try.
We do have quite a stack here. Everybody's opinion and thoughts and questions are welcome. We do ask, in the sense of timing, if you are repeating something that someone else has said, it's okay to say ditto, and please stick to the issue at hand. Call the public hearing to order right now. Our first speaker will be Sharon Scott. When you come to the microphone, please give us your full name and your address.
I'm Sharon Scott, 406 South Duncan. That would be my office.
Thank you.
And I am asking that there be, I guess, a full consideration of 12th Street. 12th Street's there. It's a main thoroughfare. We need it for the development of this community, but now we have it. I seriously doubt that anyone that lives in the end house to the south, which would be the north side of 12th Street, that'd be approximately addresses of 1123, 1124, that they would be able to sell their house as a family dwelling. I just seriously doubt they would be able to get a buyer. So for a family dwelling, I think their homes have been devalued. But on the other hand, this would be kind of like making lemonade, is that the property along 12th from Duck to Western be in the rezoning area, at least that first house in, possibly deeper. But certainly, those houses that are really next to 12th on the north side be granted a commercial office zoning, so that they have a chance to sell their home at some future time for at least the monetary value of it. It might increase their property, but I certainly don't think it would detract monetarily. But if we leave it as residential, I don't think that that property is saleable unless it was someone buying it for rental property. It would not be sold as a family dwelling. I think it's only fair to give the people who live on that north side, from Duck to Western, that zoning so that they can continue to live in it if they wish, but if they want to do something other than that, have a... to do something other than that, have a light, commercial zoning, then they have another option. And that would be all I have to ask.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Our next speaker will be John Pollak.
John Pollak, and I live at 1106 South Adams. I think, just quickly, I want to clarify something, because over this long process, we've heard a lot of talk about 12th being a major artery and the implications of that. I pulled up the Stillwater Transportation Enhancement Plan and studied that, and the widening of 12th Street was number two on the priority list for recommended changes. But the interesting thing was, it defined that as a collector's street. And a collector's street, I won't read the entire thing, it's long, but it was, collector's streets provide for a balance of traffic movement and property access connecting residential neighborhoods, parks, churches, et cetera, with the arterial system, and to provide efficient traffic circulation and preserve amenities of the neighborhoods. And that is, when we were trying to choose our boundary for the area, that was part of our thinking on 12th Street. The other boundaries, we were just trying to find a homogeneous area, that we thought, you know, the whole area was enough alike, that whatever we did, it would work for everybody. And then one other thing I want to say is that I've lived in Stillwater almost three years now, and a lot of work, a lot of time's gone into this. And the great thing is, I've made some really good friends, and I feel like I'm a lot bigger part of the community than if this hadn't happened.
Adversity does that sometimes, doesn't it?
Yeah, and so, I really feel like I'm part of the city now. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. We're happy you're part of the city. Elaine Courtright?
My name's Elaine Courtright. I live at 2208 West 11th. I am just outside of the proposed overlay district, however, I have lived in it at one point in time. I am in favor of what the neighbor, the proposal number one, that the Neighborhood Association has put together. I am not in favor of the option one, as it's been modified, showing potential mixed use on 12th, on the north side of 12th, from Washington to Adams. I see that creating further traffic congestion on 12th. You know, a lot of people are interested in that for pharmacies and other medically-related properties, and so I see more congestion, the need for more traffic lights. It sort of negates the purpose, you know, that we, you know, all that money we spent on that bond issue for 12th. I see it slowing down and congesting traffic, as we're doing in other areas. And that's my primary concern. As for Ms. Scott's arguments about rental properties and how they don't sell very well, I am the proud neighbor of someone who just paid $25,000 for a floodplain lot, and they built a big, beautiful home. They're affluent, their kids are going to live there. So, there's a demand for rental property in that area, and I think that's not a valid argument. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Courtright. Next speaker is Mike Ebert.
My name's Mike Ebert. I live at 2206 Stone Point Court in Stillwater. I suppose it's our proposal from a year ago, that we be allowed a rezoning on a piece of property we have there, that's, for those of you who haven't had an opportunity in the past year to maybe look at it. We have triplexes and duplexes to our west. We have a nursing home to our north that is certainly not single-family. We have hospital property to our south. We have no single-family surrounding us. We own some property to our east, some of the other neighbors have some, that would like to see some commercial development there. I don't know what you think would go well on that piece of property, but I doubt seriously that anybody wants a single-family home surrounded by something other than single-family homes. So, I'm really just going to stay here. If you have any questions for me on what's occurred in the past year, we've done nothing in the process, waited patiently for the neighborhood overlay project to come along. It's taken months, and so, we've just sat by, attended lots of meetings and listened. So, we haven't changed our, we haven't changed our plans for this, so if you have any questions for me, please ask, because I haven't talked to any of you about this in a year, except for, well, one time. Any questions, comments? Nope?
Not right now. Thank you, Mike. Next speaker is Robert Moore.
My name's Robert Moore. I live at 5310 Southwestern of Stillwater. I have property on the south side of 12th Street, being developed right now, fairly large building there. Tried to make it look fairly nice for the, for what we're doing there. I also own property on the north side. That, be that as it may, doesn't seem to matter. The real thing right now is, I see the hospital complex as having a very, very large footprint there, and they've already got roads put in there with a lot of ingress egress and a lot of room for expansion. And it seems to me that as we're making plans for conserving all this, we're not making plans for what's coming in the future with that hospital expansion that I assume is going to come. I don't think they would have put those roads, those ingress egress, had so much there if they weren't planning on growing and getting bigger. And we're not making plans to support that structure, as has happened with every hospital from the early days on 8th Street, where things developed around it, where things developed around 6th Street, everywhere we allowed it to, around the new hospital that was built in the 60s, I guess, the one we're currently using. And now, if we have advancements down on the south side, where your office is and things of that nature, I think there's more offices planned there. You're going to have more traffic, more people. I don't think the traffic's going to be, it's just going to be there anyway, and we're not supporting that. And I know this city needs tax revenue, and you're going from tax revenue that's insignificant with a lot of rental properties that don't produce it, to an awful lot of money that could be made with tax revenue with advancements in that area. You're going to have a lot of new businesses, if you give them the opportunity. It's going to create a lot of tax revenue. It's going to help support the staff. You're going to have hundreds of people down there looking for support structures in the way of even sandwich shops, things like that, that they may want, because they can't go anywhere, where right now, they're using food trucks to get their food, because they can't get anywhere and get back. And I think at some point, something's going to want to go down there to support those areas. Maybe not right now, but eventually they might. And if we pin ourselves in with something right now of that nature, I think we're not planning for the future too well. We're actually just looking at a very small area that we're just going to hold on to and say, oh, this is the way it's going to be. And then when that advancement happens, we're going to wish we had some opportunity there that we've already tied our hands with. That's kind of what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next speaker is Michael Oliver.
My name's Michael Oliver. I live at 1123 South Gray, which is one of those properties that fronts 12th Street, one of those first houses along the north side of 12th Street. I'd like to speak a little bit about the neighborhood's process on coming up with our proposal. The city council gave us direction to have more resident input to this area, to develop a plan that the neighborhood could live with. We met for eight weeks in a row, once a week, to develop the plan, roughly hour to hour and a half meetings for eight weeks during the summer. Had approximately 25 residents total involved in coming up with the plan. Each meeting had at least eight to 12 participants. We spent a lot of time discussing the best way to follow the city council's direction. Discussions amongst ourselves were animated, informative, and sometimes heated. We did our research and got input and information from planning services staff, the city manager, city attorney, county assessor, and individuals involved with the Westwood Neighborhood Overlay. We considered current zoning, the C3 Comprehensive Plan and Step Program for 12th Avenue traffic, and we consider our plan to be the best logical option for preserving the neighborhood and allowing limited mixed use to serve the neighborhood. These neighborhoods cannot be replaced, once lost, and deserve protection to allow the city of Stillwater to continue to grow and prosper. I would like to respond briefly to the first speaker's comments that these properties just north of 12th Street would not be sold as single-family homes. I bought my house in 2010, after the widening of 12th Street, because it provides easy access to East and West Stillwater, to get to 177 north and south, to Highway 51, which provides easy access to I-35. So, I believe this neighborhood is integral for the city to preserve, because it is desirable for residents to live there. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Shirley Weeks.
My name is Shirley Weeks. I live at 71 University Circle. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, as it was your leadership and your vote that gave me this opportunity. I would like, just to spend a few minutes to share with you a few things about how I became a believer in neighborhoods and in neighborhood people. In early 1970, a young family moved to 71 University Circle. This wonderful old neighborhood and its people welcomed us with open arms and extended hands. Along the way, the big player in the area took action that was not positive to the neighborhood. Two young inexperienced women declared, "This is not right," and a neighborhood association was formed. As we worked successfully together, neighbors, OSU, county, city, we were given more opportunities to provide in the community. I've served on many neighborhood associations, neighborhood alliance, charter review committee, zoning ordinance committee, building and trades board. As I moved forward, I learned a lot, made friends on both sides of the street, more than a few black and blue spots, and calmed some in my public speaking anxiety. So, why have I taken you on this road trip? I wanted to share why I continue to come to this podium and proudly say I'm a neighborhood advocate. Two things that I have learned and are in planning documents or spoke of by planning in communities, is the health and well-being of neighborhoods define the health and well-being of the city. How do you evaluate the health, safety, and livability of your community? You look at the health, safety, and livability of your neighborhoods. I've learned that the neighborhoods are the heart of the community. This is where our leaders come from. This is where the voters come from, where city councilmen come from, and women, where volunteers come from. And a really important thing is where the voting base comes from, because people that live in neighborhoods know about the issues that involve people. One of the primary documents of planning is to maintain, enhance, and protect neighborhoods. The council stated the community needs good quality, well-located, affordable neighborhood housing. It is economically impossible to replicate current viable, modern-priced housing in this neighborhood. The 12th Street overlay people understood the heart of the neighborhood, and with education, dedication, and perseverance, went to work on the head part. They have developed, or we have developed, an overlay that will protect and enhance the health and well-being of the neighborhood. Please support our community and support this neighborhood. Vote yes on the 12th Street overlay submitted by the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks. Linda Frank?
I'm so excited to be here. Thank you for letting me speak. So...
Linda, could you give your full name and your address?
Yes, Linda Frank. And what address do you want the property?
Your home address.
My home address?
Is there a difference?
The property that, on 12th Street, that I own?
Matter of just...
An address.
Okay. 1120 South Duck, not in witness protection. All right. So, so, I, I, whoa! Lord! So, the, my understanding of levels of zoning is that they can't leapfrog over each other? Is that, is that correct? Usually you don't go from residential all the way to commercial in one go? Is that, is that, is that? Nope? Okay. And then, and then the other thing I was going to ask about is, is if you, once you, once you up a level, so that you have commercial, does that make it possible in the future for the city to take your property, or something like that?
Take a property?
Like OSU, north of the stadium, those types of things that happen? Those are, I think those are some of the concerns I would have about it. My, my property is actually, is actually a rental, so not, I don't live there, so I'm not concerned about it for that reason, but just, I'm concerned, like, what, I want to know all the sides of it, and what the ins and outs of it are. Maybe you can direct me to a good place to find that mention.
I will direct you to a good place.
Awesome, awesome. Okay. And so, there's a reason this takes a long time, and the people that mentioned a lot of meetings, there's a reason for that, and it's, I think it's healthy, because I just found out Sunday, when I walked down to check my mail, I live in the country, and I, my, my notification was mailed to Range Road, and I live on Senga Road, and those types of things. So, I think if you don't hear from people, it's probably because they weren't, sometimes because they weren't, I just found out. So, I thought, hey...
We're glad you did.
Thank you. And, okay, so, the, my concern also is about screening and fencing and that kind of thing. If you were to make it commercial, would you be able to do something home-like, similar to what's on the other side of 12th Street, that was originally there for the longest time with nothing extra added? Note, the hospital wasn't there, but it looked kind of residential look to the architecture? And then they have screening, so that, like, their dumpsters aren't part of someone's backyard and that kind of thing? Would that be part of commercial zoning, or how does that get decided? Because I think that might take some of the pressure off if somebody was worried about, you know...
Are you speaking about the mixed-use area along Washington?
Okay, I think there's like a chiropractor and a dentist. I just drive by on 12th Street, I don't really pay attention to them.
Those are on the south side of 12th Street.
They're very attractive, like, they look, they look, they don't look like a prison style.
Well, and those are on the south side of 12th Street, and we're actually addressing the north side.
We are, but I'm saying if you were to, if you were to zone commercial, could it then just be a seven-story building and very industrial-looking and that kind of thing automatically? Or would it have to be, are things that are commercial next to residential required to have those types of looks?
Right.
And also protection from...
There's transition zones, and there are all kinds of different.
Okay, there you go. That's a good name for it. We should, we should use that.
Did we use that?
Yeah. I vote, no, no, I don't. I mean, I do, but not on that. Okay, and then traffic lights is the other concern. I love walking there, like, love it so much. Like, I go to the property and walk all the way down 12th and up to 9th, and then back, and it's three miles, it's 3.1 miles specifically, but I don't know how that is. Is it curvy? I don't get it. Anyway, I love that, and I think it would change a lot if there was a lot more, higher speed limits and, and those types of things. Because right now, as you guys know, there's that... Because right now, as you guys know, there's that tickety area at 30 miles an hour, so I wonder if that would, that would be sad to see that change.
I doubt that it would get, it would get higher.
You don't think it would get higher? You think it would get lower maybe, or?
I just doubt that it would be higher with the splash pad in the park there.
Oh, so, okay, so the 30 is for the splash pad? That makes sense. I thought it was for the dogs.
Well, those two.
All right. And then lastly, the, the, whoa, no, I've covered everything. I'm excited.
And you did it under five minutes. Thank you very much, Linda.
Yay, I'm a co-master. No, I'm kidding.
Thank you. Deborah Meike.
Deborah Meike, I live at 1023 South Kings, which is in the neighborhood proposal area, but not in the original study area. I just wanted to speak in favor of Option 1, the neighborhood proposal as it's been developed. Really proud of their work and their engagement, so I do hope that we can adopt this. I did have a question about the Option 2, the addition of the mixed-use areas that are on 12th west of the, the dog park. That property is very low, and I was wondering if it's actually in the floodplain or not, and if that has any bearing on the issues when we're talking about those possible uses. That's all I had to add right now.
Okay. Ms. Dennison, do you know that answer?
I'll apologize.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Deb. Our next speaker is Karen Warner.
My name is Karen Warner. I live at 1124 South Ridge Road. I'm going to speak a lot from the heart because I just found out about this meeting by noon today, and that includes writing this and a shower, okay? What would you do? What would you do or say to someone that walked, walked up to you and asked, "Would you please stand in front of me to buffer me and protect me from all the noise and distractions in front of me? Those noise and distractions bother me, and I would like for you to take the blunt of it." What would you do if someone came up to you and said, "Would you please use your property to buffer us from all the traffic noise and distractions from down the street? It's not about you, your inconveniences, your property value. It's totally about us." Yes, we are part of a neighborhood community. We've been there 23 years. Think we are the neighborhood. Our community and our neighborhood is there to protect us. Why were we not protected when we asked, due to the widening of 12th, to please do not allow 12th, do not allow trucks to use 12th Street due to noise and children playing? The community said it was fine to let semis go within a few feet of your living room, even with semi-jake breaks, because it was not their living room. We asked when they were widening, but no one cared. Where were the neighborhood advocates then? Was it, was it because it was not in their living room? That seems a bit uncaring. They say they want to protect neighborhoods, but they would allow, they would not allow the same thing that we go through in their own home and neighborhood. We all know that would not be acceptable. It's easy to be an advocate when it is not your property value. You can do that all day long. As a former educator, they're not my kids, but yet, whatever. It is blatantly selfish to sit in a quiet living room on a quiet patio, come by my house for tea at 8:12 and 5:00, please.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Is this specifically about the overlay?
It's about my property at 1124, or our property at 1124 South Ridge.
And how the overlay relates to that?
Exactly. We're right there on the corner, taking the blunt for everybody.
Thank you. Just wanted a clarification.
It's blatantly selfish to sit in a quiet living room on a quiet patio and say nasty things when they would not accept the same actions themselves for their home and their quality of living. These same individuals would not, would not take less than what their property is really worth, surrounded by a four-lane with large businesses and commercial entities being built just down the road to increase road traffic. Yes, we had a couple of commercial places on our little two-lane road, but this is not what we anticipated. And especially when they approach and say, "Would you please downgrade to a rental to go along with the others, value-wise?" It is easy to ask others to not pursue the true value of their property when it is not their property. We do not plan to move tomorrow. We use the lake and we RV for recreational purposes, not our patio. But we and our children have a right to the full value of our property instead of the next property owner of 1124 South Ridge. We all know that the writing is on the wall. So yes, that was a little blunt, and it was from the heart, and it was written an hour and a half ago, and I didn't have time to edit.
Thank you very much for your time. I think that is, that's the end of our speakers. So I will close the public hearing. And Ms. Dennison?
Thank you. I have a couple of things that I will respond to and then grant Planning Commission's recommendation. First, regarding 12th Avenue and its classification. In 2013, the Federal Highway Administration, working through Oklahoma Department of Transportation, adopted a new functional classification map where they evaluate the street functions throughout our community, and that took 12th Avenue from a collector to a minor arterial. So that's when that was done, is 2013. I will save the city actually condemning or taking property for Mr. Attorney if he chooses to interject. However, without a public purpose in view, municipalities do not condemn property. On 12th Avenue, the question about screening, landscaping, building a seven-story building, et cetera, the, not only does the, the zoning that is in place apply, but the overlay district, if the council chooses to, to apply those overlay districts, the mixed-use overlay district does have height requirement, it does have the bulk standards and the aesthetic components unlike other places in our community where, you know, developers can just go in and build to their heart's content. And yes, there is floodplain coming up from the southeast, crossing 12th Avenue. A number of the properties around the Adams to Washington, 12th, up a little bit towards 11th, if I recall correctly, the floodplain does affect those. The floodplain regulations will apply no matter if it's residential or commercial. Those are regulations that are established by FEMA, and we, the city, is, is the maintainer of those regulations within our corporate boundaries. So the Planning Commission, as I mentioned, they did meet on September 19th. They are sending a unanimous recommendation as follows. They recommend the neighborhood option with the additional identified properties to be included in the mixed-use overlay. They are recommending, and it was included in your packet, the text for the neighborhood conservation overlay district, as well as the text for the neighborhood mixed-use overlay district. And they're also recommending that the city council direct staff to begin to apply the conservation overlay and the mixed-use overlay to the expanded area, which will be everything outside of the study area as outlined. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Paula, could you point out the additional pieces again that the Planning Commission added?
Yes. These two additional pieces, and I can, I can pull up the actual addresses if you need them specifically. These two additional pieces, the one to the west of it that runs from 11th to 12th at the corner of 12th and Jefferson, the northwest, northeast corner, then the northwest corner of 12th and Jefferson, and then the northeast corner of 12th and Adams. So one, two, three, four, five, six parcels were included as part of the mixed-use overlay recommendation from the Planning Commission. They were not identified in mixed use from the neighborhood proposal.
Right. Thank you.
A couple, a couple of questions about that. One, does the mixed-use overlay have to apply to an entire parcel, or can it apply to a portion of an existing parcel?
The way it is being recommended to you from the Planning Commission, it is applying to an entire parcel.
Okay. Do we have to do, are we limited to these three options? If, if I was to propose another option, could I propose that the mixed-use overlay applies to a portion of a parcel instead of a full parcel?
I will defer.
Yes, you can. Okay. Is there any, I, I don't recall, I can't remember from the Planning Commission if there was a specific reason these six parcels were picked to add, if it was just because they thought it should extend out, or is it because they're currently vacant? Or was there a, any other descriptor of why they picked those?
I, I do not recall any, and I don't believe that is detailed in their Planning Commission minutes. I will offer this, if it helps any at all. They were very diligent in specifically which parcels to include, to add into the mixed-use overlay, to the point of having the map and marking on the map.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask a question of Mr. Oliver as the representative of the neighborhood? You're kind of the spokesperson, right?
Yeah, unofficial spokesperson.
Unofficial, unofficial. What was the neighborhood's objection to the additional parcels?
It wasn't our first choice. Our objection is that it can slow down traffic along 12th Street, which is our goal to avoid that. That's why we put it on Washington, because we believe that that street has already developed half-commercial with doctor's offices on the east side, and it would provide a convenient north-south corridor between 6th and 12th Street that does not exist outside of Western or Duck Street currently.
So having additional mixed use on the western corner would slow down traffic?
Yes, we believe that there would be access along 12th Street drawing traffic to 12th Street with the addition of the mixed use that the Planning Commission recommended.
And is that the main objection, only objection?
Yes.
Okay. Wasn't your first choice? Was it choice 1A?
Yeah, it's not our first choice. I think the majority of us can live with it, but it's definitely not our first choice to add those additional six parcels.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our option is to...
Yeah, so, yeah, let's, can we review? So what are our options here? I mean, as far as taking action tonight, if, if we're voting on an option, let's use this as an example, as the, the Planning Commission's proposal. My problem with this is that, is that we're talking about an area that's well outside the original study area, and we're setting in motion things that, for people that have not had a voice here yet. You know, I know that we're only voting for land inside of the study area, but we're setting in motion further discussion along all of Washington Street. And I've looked at it on Google Maps even during this meeting, and there's a fair amount of residential structure there. There is one doctor's office on the east side of that street, and there's tennis courts on, along 8th and Washington, I believe, or 7th and Washington. But on the west side of that street, there's a lot of residential area. And I have a problem proceeding with something that is going to set in motion things for these people that have not had an opportunity to speak on their own behaps yet. So with that said, is there a way that we can make a motion to approve things within the study area without setting in motion anything outside of that study area?
You could do that. I would say this, make this comment about what the Planning Commission proposed, and that is that its intent was to start the process so that you could get notice out and get more input from the people who were in that area. So they were actually trying to accomplish that. But if you want to take that part of, if you want to adopt something short of that recommendation, it's certainly within the prerogative of this body to do so.
Just because we, a place would be renamed mixed use, multi-use, doesn't mean that the homes are bulldozed and new things are built.
This, this is a tough one for a lot of reasons. One, it's been, you know, as Mr. Ebert said, this has been in front of us for a year now, and there are a lot of competing interests and a lot of concerns and a lot of folks who have, as we've seen, strong opinions about what we should do here. You know, I, I think originally spoke about the importance of this neighborhood. It's a neighborhood I grew up in, and I think it is, as a, as a neighborhood of affordable housing in Stillwater, to the extent we really have any of that at all, this is one of the places you can get it. There's not a lot of it here. And I have a real concern with anything that would jeopardize the ability of, of individuals, young families, whoever, to go buy a house that's affordable in this town and live here and take advantage of the amenities we have. You know, it, it's tough if you can't afford to live here, and this is one of those areas where we really, I think, need to be concerned about preserving that, that affordable housing. At the same time, you know, the developmental hospital across the street has created, you know, more commercial pressure, created folks who, like Mr. Ebert, see an opportunity and certainly have absolutely no, you know, ill will other than trying to, to serve a need in the community, and I think that's, you know, that's certainly not a, a bad idea either. And so trying to strike a balance between these things is, is tough, and it's unfortunately, I guess, why we're all sitting here, because we, for some reason, thought it would be a good idea for you to give us that, that power to make that decision. You know, just, just to make a couple of points about what was said, you know, that, I, I think it was, I'm sorry, just looking at my, Mr. Moore talked about, you know, planning for the future with this hospital expansion, good point, but at the same time, the hospital chose to relocate in a, in a place where they had residential areas across the street. This area across on the north side of 12th has been neighborhoods for a long time. It was identified many years ago in the C3 plan as continuing to be residential, so it's difficult to say, you know, that folks who have been in houses and bought in a residential area and bought in a place that was said was going to remain a residential area should have to, you know, give that up because the hospital decided to put their, their new building across the, across 12th Street from them. You know, again, at the same time, I don't want, you know, we as a city have to be looking forward and saying, hey, things change, things grow. We can't plan all this out 10 years or 15 years ahead of time and anticipate everything that's going to happen. So, long story short, you know, I don't understand, I guess, when I asked about another option, I, I guess I don't understand why we would take the mixed-use overlay to these six parcels along 12th Street on the north side and not continue it down to the, the parcel there at Blakely, or I guess that's Blakely, that, that's the cross street. You know, those are, that's a vacant lot. There are a couple houses just to the east of that, but then I think everything else to the east of that, that they did put in, that the Planning Commission did put in there is, is currently vacant. There's a lot of, of open area over there in the floodplain. So to me, the choice between the neighborhood's proposal and the Planning Commission's proposal, you know, if we're going to go with the Planning Commission proposal, I don't understand you know, if we're going to go with the Planning Commission proposal, I don't understand why we wouldn't just move it down to Blakely and give at least the, the, the portion, I don't know how, what the distances are, if it's two lots deep on that, that large. I don't think we want to turn that entire parcel to, to the mixed-use overlay there at, at 12th and Blakely, but, but it would seem like the frontage would be prime for this, for this overlay. So, I guess my, my, my question would be whether we, why, why wouldn't we just go ahead and, and extend that down to the, to the parcel that's still open there? And I'm, again, even for myself, not totally convinced that that's the right thing to do. I, I, I would lean that direction because when I asked Ms. Dennison about putting the overlay in place, we are also trying to make a concerted effort to say, this isn't going to spread farther, right? That we're saying if we turn, put these, frontage on 12th, recognize the, the demand that we're seeing with the new hospital property, that we're going to respond to that, but at the same time, we're also going to say, we don't want this to get any bigger, we want to keep it contained, we want to protect the neighborhood, you know, and trying to balance those interests by doing a little bit of both, which is usually, nobody ever likes that.
Make nobody happy.
And, and I, and I think, and I agree with you, Counselor Woodlake, that we, we want to make sure we get, you know, more input in the larger area that's outside of the current study, but I, I would certainly want to see that entire area covered with the neighborhood protection overlay as well, because I, I think it is important. I mean, I think, you know, somebody talked about, well, those, those houses on that side of the street are going to drop in value, and shouldn't we be concerned about them? I, I get that too, but if, if the house on the end goes commercial, what happens to the house next to it, and then the house next to that? And so, at some point, we've got to be able to say, this is what's going to be there, and there's going to be a line, and unfortunately, somebody's going to live on the line. No matter, you know, no matter where we draw it, somebody's going to live on the line. And it's just, there's just not great answers there. So, I'm sorry for, for talking so much, but I, I think, what I guess I would like to see is, you know, the lots, that front 12th Street down to Blakely, and, and I guess the front half, or I don't know how many feet it is of that, of that lot, right, at 12th and Blakely, be included in the mixed-use overlay, and, and to go that direction with, with this at this point.
Ms. Dennison, could you pull that up again so we can, everyone can see that on the map? Please.
And then, yeah, I have no idea what the distances are, but whether it's half or the, the frontage, you know, the width of, of a couple of those other lots next to it, something like that seems to make sense.
Now, just a quick question, Paula. So, on that property, the large lot there at Blakely and 12th, behind that, it shows that there's a parcel behind that on that particular map. However, on these other two maps, I don't have that parcel in there. This, the 1220 extends all the way to 11th Street on the maps I have. And I'm, I'm referring specifically to the maps that were provided in Addendum 2 in our The option number one, presented from the Neighborhood Association, and then option number two, which was discussed earlier in front of the council.
Yes, this Planning Commission recommended map does show it accurately. There has been some property transference, so the parcel 1220, West 12th, just has a very small frontage on 11th Avenue, if I recall correctly, 30, 35 feet in width or so.
Okay.
So, this, this map is the one that is reflecting it correctly, yes.
Okay.
I think I'm the one that's been quiet this evening, because I've done quite a lot of thinking and talking with Paula Dennison about this, and I think the things that I come away with on this is a little bit about what Counselor Joyce said, and that is that balance. And the balance is, I don't think communities can be built separately where there's housing and business. At some point, there has to be a way that they connect and meet. And I think as we look at what this decision is for zoning, it's figuring out, how do we have those things meet together, but protect both of them, in a sense. 12th Street is developing on the south side, we, we see that, and so, the discussion tonight really is how far north, or what, what needs to happen with the north. What I've been pleased to know is that the neighborhood met and gave input, and I think we need to give value to that, and I think we need to hear them. I also believe that what has been proposed, I think, is a, is a good compromise, and I'm, I'm willing to, to go forward with it. I think we can, I think, like you said, there's always going to be that one house or that one building that's going to be that, that one that's next to it. I feel comfortable that we are putting things in place that will help protect the neighborhood, and I also think that at some point, that business needs to, needs to occur. So, I'm comfortable with the suggestion that you had, Counselor Joyce, of moving that mixed overlay use farther towards Blakely.
I, I, and for what it's worth, I agree with that as well. To me, the Planning Commission's recommendation just seems kind of arbitrary, the way it's laid out there. You know, and let me say, first, I applaud the Neighborhood Association for, for your input in doing all that you've done. That's, that's very commendable, and that's the reason we're having this discussion at all, because of your, because of your efforts and all of the diligence that you put into it. So, I commend you on that. The way that this recommendation is laid out, I agree, just seems, seems, like I said, for lack of a better term, arbitrary. I would be for extending that out to the, to Blakely Street as, as kind of a hard border for where we go as far as how far west this mixed overlay proceeds. So, that's, I tend to agree with both of you on that point.
So, we have a new proposal.
I don't know how it needs to be framed.
Well, and that was, at the Planning Commission meeting, we literally got a map out, and we identified the lots by number and the addresses, and we added those in. In this instance, I don't, do we have that capability?
It's, it'd be 1124 and probably 1120 Adams, and then a portion of 1220, whatever that, I don't know, is that 1220 12th, or 1220 Blakely? What is the address of that?
I thought they were going to show how you get to our GIS mapping while I was doing it.
I, while you're looking that up, Paula, I will also say that for the property specifically, the large plot that borders close to Blakely Street, with the fact that there is a, there is an inlet that goes all the way to 11th Street, I would, I would propose rezoning that entire plot instead of, instead of breaking it up, to have entrances from 11th Street and 12th Street.
No, I don't know. The concern there is that you're talking about making 11th Street commercial, and that's, that's more than I think we can really... That's the concern, is that it would be...
Makes a little island there.
Yeah. Because Blakely runs between a bunch of houses there. It's not a, 1220 is not accessible from Blakely. It's only accessible from 11th and 12th.
Well, if the plan, at least as I understand it, is to put density housing on the north side of that plot...
It's not, it's not going to be density housing, because the neighborhood overlay is single-family only.
Okay. So, the only way to get to that housing then would be 12th Street?
Off 11th or 12th.
If I may, Blakely is a private street.
Yeah.
It functions more as a driveway that connects the, the residences on either side of the street from 11th to 12th.
How does, how does that affect this option that's been proposed?
It's actually the property that Blakely Street cuts across in or out, from what I'm, I'm understanding.
It does extend all the way to 11th Street, though.
Yes.
It connects 11th and 12th.
Blakely Street.
Yeah.
But you, you couldn't have an access to 1220 off of Blakely Street?
Um, not...
In the north portion.
Not without acquiring property, because there's a, there's a green strip that runs between Blakely Street that's on the Blakely Street parcel and the 1220.
Yeah, so that, 1220 does not front Blakely.
1220 does not touch Blakely.
Yeah.
So, I have the parcels with their addressing brought up.
So...
This is Blakely, the one that has Blakely bisecting it is 1121 West 12th, so that would be this entire parcel from 11th to 12th.
So, I wasn't, my proposal would just be 1220 12th, is that, that one?
That is this parcel.
Yes, would just be a, a portion of the frontage of 1220 12th.
It is approximately two acres, close to two acres, so...
The front acre.
You just split it in half?
I mean, just so it's a, so it's commercial of the frontage, the south half.
Let's just call it the south half.
And then 1124 Adams, which fronts 12th Street, and 1121 Adams is already in the proposed...
Right.
Correct.
Right? So, those two, 1124 and the south half of 1220, is what I'm proposing we'd add at this point.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Dennison? Mr. Dorman, any other questions?
Yep, pretty much.
Every time. So, we have, we have a new proposal?
Well, if it's new, it's just an addition to...
An addition.
An addendum or addition to...
Do I need to phrase that as a motion?
Well, if you, do you want the Planning Commission recommendation plus these two lots, basically? Is that the...
Yes.
...form of the motion? So, it would be to accept the Planning Commission recommendation plus the addition of lots located 1124 Adams and the south half of 1220, I wasted a year, that's on 12th Street, I believe, into the mixed-use category.
Correct.
Yes, that is my motion.
And, and by accepting the Planning Commission recommendation, you're accepting the recommendation to encourage us, to encourage the staff to work on the rest of the...
Yes, ma'am, we'd be directed to start that process.
Okay. So, that'd all be part of the Planning Commission?
Second.
Sorry.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. To accept the Planning Commission recommendation with the addition of 1124 Adams and 1220 into mixed use, and that also includes the recommendation to ask the staff to extend the Conservation District, or the whole, the whole plan, south, north.
Ask the staff to, to study that.
Yeah, begin that process.
Yes.
So, just so we're clear for, you know, everybody out there, that map over there with the mixed use beyond the study area is not a mixed use until we do further research, right? Just so I understand as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And just for the record, you'll get an ordinance in a couple of weeks that will basically reflect all of this, and then you'll have a second set of ordinances come through where you actually apply it to the, the properties themselves. So, you're going to see this a couple more times, and then as the other portion of it, once that notification process starts, you'll have additional hearings as well.
Okay. So, additional hearings. We have a motion and a second. Everybody clear on that? Okay. Please vote. And that...
I'm going back and forth.
Okay. Are you done going back and forth?
No.
Okay. That does pass three to one. Thank you to everyone who spoke today. Appreciate you taking the time and expressing your wishes. That takes us to item number eight, Resolutions. Resolution A. I get to read these?
You can read it or I'll read it.
Okay. Mr. Dorman.
You're going to let me read it?
Sure.
All right. CC 2017-16, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council prohibiting the flying of unmanned aircraft systems, UAS, during certain public events on October 13 and 14, 2017. This is the notification that is required by the city ordinance with respect to flying unmanned aircraft over public events. In this particular instance, it's the walk-around and the parade on, for homecoming.
Okay. Councilors?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes four to zero. Thank you. Mr. Dorman?
Second item is Resolution Number CC 2017-17 and SUA 2017-7, a resolution authorizing the city manager and general manager to execute certain documents pertaining to depository banks. The city has funds in a bank known as Patriot Bank in Tulsa. It was acquired by an entity known as Equity Bankshares, Inc., and so, to make sure that there's no question as to the manager's ability to execute documents with respect to that banking institution, we're asking that you adopt this resolution.
Okay.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes four to zero. Item C. Mr. Dorman?
Resolution declaring pub, excuse me, Resolution CC 2017-18, a resolution declaring the public necessity for acquiring ownership to real property in permanent and temporary easements on a certain tract of land hereinafter described, located in Section 27, township 19 North, Range 2 East of the Indian Meridian, Payne County, State of Oklahoma, for the purpose of construction, constructing a water transmission line in the southwest area of Stillwater for the 56th Avenue Water Tower Distribution Zone. This is a resolution of necessity that will allow us to acquire a small, an easement across a small parcel south of 19th Street. It's the last piece that we need to complete the Water 2040 project overrun the area road.
Okay. Thank you. Councilors?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. Okay. That takes us to ordinances. On first reading?
Would be Ordinance Number 3386, an ordinance rezoning property addressed to 316 South Slalard Street from P. Public District to O. Office District.
Councilors, any questions?
Motion to advance to second reading?
Second.
Motion and a second to advance Ordinance Number 3386 to second reading. Please vote. And that passes four to zero. Item B.
Ordinance Number 3387, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 1005 South Duncan Street from RT Residential Two-Family District to RTM Residential Two-Family and Multi-Family District.
Councilors, any questions?
Motion to advance to second reading?
Second.
Motion and a second to advance Ordinance Number 3387. Please vote. And now, on...
Street from RT Residential Two Family District to RTM Residential Two Family and Multi-Family District.
Councillors?
Motion to advance?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to advance ordinance number 3387, please vote. And now on, that passes four to zero. On second reading, ordinance 3384, Mr. Dorman?
An ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending chapter 29, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, Stopping, Standing or Parking, Section 29 dash 136, prohibited in certain places, and Section 29 dash 144 violations, and by amending Division 3 Hazardous Parking, Section 29 dash 148 violations, and by amending Article 5 Overtime Parking, Section 29 dash 168 violations.
Councillors, any questions?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 3384, please vote. And that passes four to zero. Ordinance, uh, number B, ordinance 3385.
An ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 1121 South Western Road from RSS Smallot Single Family Residential District to O. Office District.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 3385, please vote. And that passes four to zero. Brings us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report tonight, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. McNichol?
Yes, ma'am, I have one item. Exciting things have been happening at the Stillwater Regional Airport these past few weeks. We recently welcomed Paul Prigle as the new Assistant Director for the airport. Paul previously served our community for over 11 years with the Stillwater Police Department. We're also thrilled to hear from the U.S. Department of Transportation that our airport is receiving a $4.5 million grant from the FAA. The grant funds will be used to repel, repair the parallel taxiway D. And the summer schedule is over, was over in August. Early morning flights have resumed, and our ridership was back up to, uh, over 4,500 in September. So fly Stillwater.
Good news. Councillors, do you have anything to, um, announce?
I do. On Wednesday, October 18th, an Overdrive Digital Bookmobile and your Stillwater Public Library librarians will visit the Perkins Road Walmart from 12 to 6 p.m. to help you use the library's free ebook and e-audiobook services and to promote local shopping. Visitors can also get a library card on site and earn chances to draw for prizes like a tablet and a Walmart gift card. Go to the library's website for more details. Good idea.
Yeah, Wednesday, October-
Wednesday, October 18th, 12 to 6.
Okay. Any other councillors?
Uh, absolutely. There are a lot of events coming up this month in the city of Stillwater, including the Mummy and Sundance, the Next Free Household Hazardous Waste Collection event, and the Halloween Festival. Make sure you check out the calendar on the city's website at stillwater.org, uh, to see the full lineup of events.
All right, rounding this out, um, I'm happy to report that the Wings of Hope sidewalk at the airport in Washington will be extended along the south side of Airport Road, uh, to CameoCA Trail and Boomer Lake Park. So not only will residents have improved access to the OSU transit system, but pedestrians and cyclists will also be able to utilize the trail for access to the park. Uh, the Wings of Hope sidewalk is being funded by the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, uh, and, and city matched funds. So soon we will have improved, uh, access down there at Boomer Lake Park. I will also say that it, coming up Wednesday, it is National Walk to School Day. Uh, so I, I urge everybody, if you have young kids in the Stillwater Public School System, to, uh, participate in this and, and walk them to school. So, I know, for example, that the Singer Ridge, uh, School District is meeting at Babcock Park. I don't know what, about any other schools specifically, but-
I think Westwood's meeting at the Stillwater Medical Center?
Yeah? Be fun. Get out there and walk.
Walk safely and drive safely, looking out for people walking. I also have a reminder that the city staff is still gathering community input and providing information on infrastructure projects that could be funded with a general obligation bond. They are gathering that information through November. We really want to know your thoughts on where Stillwater's critical needs are. Go to the website, take the quick Go Bond Resident Survey and learn more. It is really short. Just do it immediately, soon as you can pull it up on your phone.
And if I may-
Yes?
If I may, um, there'll be some changes on that in the not-too-distant future. We'll be, be asking, we will be asking more questions because as a result of feedback from citizens and citizen groups, uh, there will be more information with a possible option, added to that page.
Okay, so a good rehearsal would be to do it quickly while it's short?
That's right.
That would be just a rehearsal?
The new one will be short as well, but-
And then even if you did it before, you should go back and do it again-
That's right.
With new options.
That's right, absolutely, absolutely. That takes us to appointments. Oh. I just got the note this afternoon that Gina would not be here. I do not know who she is appointing to the audit committee.
Uh, it has to be a member of the city council.
Okay, so I see that.
What committee is this, I'm sorry?
Audit Committee.
Audit Committee?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So what, we need to appoint somebody here to the audit committee?
You'll need to select someone, yes. Per the ordinance, there has to be one member of the city council that sits on that committee. Uh, if you're looking for a one-time-a-year meeting to fulfill your, is it word one?
I nominate John Wedlake.
I would be happy to volunteer for that committee.
I will second the nomination of John Wedlake.
Councillor Wedlake, do you accept that nomination?
Happily, yes, ma'am.
Oh, good, that's what we'd like to hear. So I have made the, I'm making a motion to appoint Councillor Wedlake. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to appoint Councillor Wedlake happily to the audit committee. And that does pass four to zero. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn this meeting, please vote. Let's see. This, this is gonna be quick. We can do this one next. Utilities, next. Do the Utilities Authority next. Okay. I would like to call the Stillwater Utilities Authority Regular Meeting open, called to order. Uh, Consent Docket, trustees, anything you would like to pull from the Consent Docket?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket, please vote. And that passes four to zero. And that takes us to General Orders. Item A, authorize an amendment to the Stillwater Energy Center Project Professional Services Agreement with Burns and McDonnell, SUA 1733. Mr. McNichol?
And Lauren Smith, Stillwater Electric, will provide that report.
Good evening, trustees, Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. Uh, I'm here tonight to request authorization to execute an amendment to the Stillwater Energy Center, uh, Project Professional Service Agreement with Burns and McDonnell. Uh, on December 15th, 2014, the trustees authorized, uh, staff to execute an amendment to the SEC Project Professional Service Agreement with Burns and McDonnell for the design and procurement support necessary to make modifications to our 69,000-volt transmission system. Since then, uh, the four miles of transmission line have been designed and the procurement of the steel poles has been completed. Originally, staff planned to perform the construction of the transmission modifications in-house. Uh, however, due to the current and projected workloads, the construction, uh, cannot be performed in-house in a timely manner. Uh, staff is requesting, uh, approval to enter into an agreement with Burns and Mac to per, to perform the remaining procurement necessary, uh, for the construction management and the, to hire a general contractor to complete the construction. Uh, staff recommends that the trustees authorize staff to execute an amendment to the SEC Project, uh, Professional Service Agreement with Burns and McDonnell in the amount of $333,700, and authorize expenditures from the electric RSF up to $367,070 for the engineering, procurement, and construction management services needed to complete the transmission system modifications.
Lauren, do you know how long you think it'll take, projected time?
They're estimating about three months.
Three months?
And we've been working on this for about three years, and as the, the design started coming in, the scope started getting larger and larger, and it, and it really kind of outgrew our, our capabilities. So, uh, with our current workloads, we're just trying to-
Sure.
Keep ahead of the game here, and, and this, uh, we believe is the best way to go.
Any other, uh, questions, councillors, trustees? I had just one question, um, not to muddy the waters, but in the report, it discussed, um, another project that would be coming, uh, subsequent to this.
Uh, let's see.
For the actual can, complete construction?
Hmm, I'm drawing a blank. There, there's, this project incorporates several, uh, there's a, there's a piece of it, and I don't know if this is what I was talking about or not, is the industrial substation piece, uh, that we're, we're currently doing in-house. Uh, when the transmission system is modified, it will route through the industrial substation to tie that link. And I'm so sorry, I'm not-
Well, I did not make a copy of the report, I just made a note, and it, it's, it's something different than the resolution, so it wa, I was just curious.
Oh, oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I know what you're talking about now. Uh, I gave you an estimated cost of the general contractor to, to finish the job.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this first piece is for the engineering, uh, support.
Right.
And the second piece will be, uh, Burns and Mac's support to, uh, procure a general contractor to complete the job.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And those funds are available in?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. The, the, all the funds available, uh, are available for this project. And that piece was like 2.5 million or something like that, 2.1 million-
Yeah.
For the, that piece.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry about that, I'm sorry I didn't pick-
No, I, I'm sorry I didn't bring my whole, whole note, I just have a little scratch note here. Okay, so, um, resolution number SUA 2017 dash seven. Nope, nope, sorry, authorize, yes, we have to take this. I was jumping down to resolutions.
Motion to accept staff recommendation?
Second.
Motion and a second to accept staff recommendation on the amendment to the Stillwater Energy Center Project Process Professional Services Agreement. And that passes four to zero. Thank you, Lauren. That takes us to the resolutions, resolution number SUA 2017 dash seven. And we already covered this in our city council meeting.
Yes, ma'am, you just need to take a second vote, the trustees also have to vote for it as well.
Okay, trustees?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt SUA 2017 dash seven. Please vote. And that passes four to zero. Reports from General Counsel, Mr. Dorman?
Report, ma'am.
General Manager?
No report, ma'am.
Trustees?
I should've said it earlier, but Lauren, I just want to do a shout-out to you and your staff. Um, I never paid much attention to how my lights came on and how my utilities were taken care of until I was a city councillor, or now I'm trustee. And, um, the things that you do on a day-to-day basis to make sure that our community runs smoothly, um, and then when it doesn't run smoothly, how you take care of it, thank you for that, and please extend that to your staff. I apologize I didn't speak up sooner, but congratulations on a great week. That truck out there is amazing, you would have to pay me millions of dollars to get in that bucket. So, thank you.
You could go right up to your deck.
I could right up, yeah, no, no.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, please vote. And that passes four to zero. And now I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meet, regular meeting for October 2nd.
And they waited so patiently.
They, they couldn't move, they were, would you like to stand? Uh, Consent Docket. Councillors, trustees?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket, please vote. And that passes four to zero. And that takes us to General Orders. Visit Stillwater 2017 Annual Report. Mr. McNichol?
And Kristy Morrison will be providing that report on behalf of Visit Stillwater. Along with Kylie.
Thank you. See to trustees, I'm Kristy Morrison, representing the Visit Stillwater team. We're located at 2617 West 6th Avenue. Um, you can probably notice who we are, last year at this time, you asked us all to do a dance. And Melissa would love to do that when, when we're done. Um, you all received a copy of our annual report back in July, and instead of providing with you a bunch of data that's in that report, we're going to mention a few of the highlights, but what we're showing you is, uh, information that, actually pictures that we are able to aggregate from our residents and our visitors to help tell the Stillwater story for us. So as they are posting pictures, as they go around the museums, attractions, restaurants, hotels, all across the community, they are posting these pictures, we are able to aggregate them, use them to tell the Stillwater, Stillwater story for us. As of today, we have over 200,000 fif, blah, about 205,000 pictures. Uh, you might even see some of yourselves come up here in just a little bit.
Note to self, no more selfies.
Yeah. Um, but it, you know, we, it's our job to tell the Stillwater story, so it's so neat to have others help us tell that story for us, and so we're really excited about that. Um, obviously, our marketing goal is, everything centers around a very robust, responsive, user-friendly website, which we feel like we really put a lot of time, resources into that. We also, obviously, want to promote all of our industry partners. And, uh, last, last fiscal year in 2017, we had a 54% increase in user sessions and a 50% increase in website users. So we were very, very excited about that, and because, as City Manager McNichol mentioned a minute ago, with, uh, the addition of direct air service, obviously, the Texas market became even more important to us. So we were redirecting some of our digital print, advertising, and marketing to that market. As of the end of fiscal year 2017, online users from Texas was, they were 28% of our total users, with 70% of them being from the DFW area, which is exactly what we were trying to target, so we're very excited about that and hope that that has, had a very positive impact on the, uh, folks using the airline service to come to us, rather than from here to go somewhere else. So we're coming from kind of the opposite side of those here locally probably are. Uh, we have really been embracing a lot of social media writers, travel writers, bloggers. Uh, we have a growing number of social influencers who are tracking the Visit Stillwater hashtag and handle, and as a result, we had an 80% increase in exposure with over 12 million social users last year. We posted in over 10 travel bloggers. Uh, you, you probably know that we brought some in for our holiday activities last year, including the Polar Express, Land Run 100. We worked with Bobby for an event that was, um, here in downtown area, but people that are specific to that industry, that we could reach out to them to let them know of other reasons to come to Stillwater. The Wine Forum of Oklahoma hosted on the OSU campus. We learned very quickly that that's not just an Oklahoma-based event, that's a nationally-known event, and those travel bloggers helped us with that. Football 101 for Women, we hosted five travel writers, women, travel writers in for the Football 101 for Women. In fact, one of them is a writer for the Tulsa World and an OU graduate, and she wrote the most positive portrayed article in regard to the Stillwater experience in the OSU football team. So we're really excited about that. Um, we, we weren't sure how she was going to take it, and she loved every single second of it. Uh, the online events calendar is one of the highest traffic pages on our website, but it's only one of a lot of different ways that we get events, or event information out, also from local and statewide TV, radio, print publications, news press, uh, newspapers, and the news press, of course. We promoted, we promoted over 1,200 events on our website last year alone. Uh, we also do some sweep, sweepstake giveaways. Last year, we gave away 12, usually pairs of tickets. It allowed us to get information from over 5,000 individuals who, uh, who online entered themselves into winning these different tickets, so they were clearly people very interested in Stillwater, in opportunities to come to Stillwater or come back to Stillwater. So, uh, they are now receiving all kinds of information about Stillwater. Uh, because a lot of this and other marketing programs that we had last year, we were very honored at the Red Bed Awards banquet in May. The Oklahoma Travel Industry Association and the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department recognized Visit Stillwater with the best overall marketing campaign and the best website in the state of Oklahoma. So we were very, very, very honored with that because, um, that was beating out a lot of the much larger metro areas, as well as a lot of the Native American- the much larger metro areas, as well as a lot of the Native American tribes whose budgets are much, much greater than ours. So we were very excited about that. The Visitor Information Center, if you ever called our office, you know it's always a fun place to come visit. I think most of it's because of Melissa at the end of the aisle there. We had a 39% increase in walk-in visitors. In fact, it never, ever ceases to amaze me to hear people out in the front room and from another state that they were traveling back I-35, came off the interstate 15 minutes just to come see Melissa because they had seen her on the way through the first time. So we get a lot of those winter Texans that are coming back and forth and back and forth, so they always stop in to see how Melissa's doing. We distributed over 135,000 travel and tours and print publications and responded to over 5,500 consumer inquiries in fiscal year 2015. On the sales side, we distributed 468 sales leads to our hotel partners. We serviced over 200 sales accounts, value of about $80,000, and that's a lot of marketing and promotion. We love helping events, I think they sometimes plan great events but forget to tell people about them, so we kind of step in and help them on the marketing side of that. We host four quarterly lunch, four quarterly hotel luncheons to collaborate with our partners. In fact, Norman McNichol was our speaker two quarters ago, which was, which was great. In fact, they're going so well, we are probably going to change those to every other month next year, to meet a little bit more often, to make sure we are all on the same page and moving toward the same direction. We ended last year with a 9% increase in hotel room tax. The Spring Hill Suites is still under construction, they're going to add another 81 rooms to our total hotel room inventory, which will bring us to 1,545 total hotel rooms in the city of Stillwater. Fiscal year 2017, we provided just over, well, just under actually, $60,000, or $51,000 in grants that translated to just over $8 million in direct visitor spending. Some of those events that could actually take place in other communities, and we work very diligently to ensure that they don't leave Stillwater, is the American Junior Golf Association Ping Invitational, which is actually this weekend, it's going to be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, out at Carston Creek. We work very closely with Coach Young at Oklahoma State University and the local tennis association to bring in the Stillwater Pro-Am Classic. That is the second year, and it just ended on Sunday, so that is an eight-day event, so that's obviously a great event for Stillwater. The National North American Red Junior, Red, sorry, Junior Red Agnes, Agnes, Angus event, six days, that is a national event, and we were so excited to have that because once again, that's an event that brought in the entire whole family for six full days, so we're very excited about that. Look forward to getting them back at some point in the near future. The Red Dirt Rendezvous Regional Hereford Show, that was a three-day event. The Central Regional Rabbit Club Show, first time to host it in Stillwater, they came into town with 500 rabbits, they left with 2,500 rabbits. Not really, but maybe a little bit. But we're very excited because they are going to actually host two events in Stillwater this year, so we're very excited about that. And the Aggie Cattle Challenge, if you've ever had the opportunity to see the dogs and how they are able to maneuver the cattle through the field, it's amazing, a really cool spectator event. Once again, the air service to Stillwater, and I know you all have heard all of us say this a million times, that's been the greatest single game changer for visitor development in Stillwater. Since the time that we announced the air service, August 23rd of last year, Visit Stillwater has provided over $133,000 in marketing assistance to make sure that we get the word out about the regional air service. We worked with Tourism Economics, which is a branch of Oxford Economics, which are considered some of the best economists in the country. They work closely with Starr and Dean Runyon, who are the foremost experts in tourism data. We did a report with them, and their data showed that in Pang County and based out of Stillwater, last fiscal year, there was $11.7 million in state and local taxes, which is equivalent to about $388 per Pang County household. So that means thanks to the visitor dollars coming into Stillwater, it saved Pang County taxpayers that amount of money out of their own pockets because the visitors coming in were helping picking up those expenses. And it also, this is one thing that we're very proud of, the number of trips, visitor spending, and the employment from tourism alone showed that tourism development in Pang County is growing faster than it is for the entire state of Oklahoma as a full, as a whole. So we're very excited about that. And then also, we also distributed a very comprehensive business plan that encompasses our marketing plan, our sales plan, all of that you also received in July. We're happy at any time to talk about that with you, at any time. We had a strategic planning retreat with the board, we have a very focused direction we'd like to see the group go for the next, at least the next three years, just to really do what we can to bring in more visitors through the different avenues that we have available to us here in Stillwater. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. That was kind of distracting, wasn't it? I kept seeing pictures of people I knew. Michael came to our office today, too, we're going to help him with some things going on during homecoming this year.
Lot of energy in your side of town.
Yeah. Yes, very much so.
Quite a...
Is that, is that all you do? Is there anything else? Is that it? I think you guys are...
It's past her bedtime, so this is really good for her.
If you go out at the rice moment, they have really good chocolate chip cookies.
Also, thanks to Melissa. Yes.
Well, I, I just want to say thank you in the report, I think it's, it's one of those things that, I think as a, a community, we know things happen and events happen, and when people ask, you know, what is the purpose of having a Visit Stillwater, you know, what you reported here shows, there's, there's a reason why we have you.
Thank you.
I think probably one of the things, as I was reading through this, I was like, oh my gosh, those are things I just, I didn't think about, and so thank you for all that you do for that. I'm also a very visual person, and Kristy and I talked about this earlier today. I'm, I'm one who also wants to be able, when people say, why do we have a Visit Stillwater? I want to be able to tell them, you know, based on a, on a budget total, this much goes to marketing, this much goes to admin, and I think that helps solidify, too, what you're doing. All the activities that you do is, are, is important, but there's still a factor of people wanting to know what is the impact of, I mean, how, how is your day-to-day business? What is your budget? What does that look like? What is it, where do things go? And it's not to say that that wasn't included in here, I think it was just for me, I'm just a straight shooter, one-page, you know, whatever, and so Kristy and I talked about that. I think that would be helpful on my end, just to simply tell people, but I just, thank you, because I think that there is a reason why communities need to have a place like what you do, because there need to be people that visit the Melissa's because they remembered it from before. We need people who can partner with people who have a great idea for an event, and we all have had those moments where we have great ideas for events, but we don't know how to execute it, or we don't know the right people to get our information out to, and that's what you guys do, and you do it very well, you do it very effortlessly, and you do it with, always with a smile on your face, even though it's probably, you know, the 100th thing you're doing that day. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
I think I asked this the last time you were up here, and I bet the answer's probably pretty similar, but what is, what are you seeing still as a need in Stillwater to be able to attract more visitor events and more of those multi-day sorts of things? What, what do you see visitors wanting us to have?
Yeah, the, it's the still, the same answer, it's the, the need for meeting space. We do have great meeting space in Stillwater, we don't have it when it's available all at the same time. So it's very much a challenge to have a big event to where you can have an exhibit hall and general sessions and breakout sessions and different meal functions, and that's definitely our biggest challenge. So we've kind of, as a result of the strategic plan, gearing a little bit more toward the agriculture side and see what we can do about facility development there, that we could provide some agriculture facilities that might also have a little bit of meeting space that could also attract other events that may not be your stereotypical agricultural space, but would be able to use those, those types of facilities.
I went to the Cattle Dog Challenge.
Wasn't it cool?
It was amazing.
Yeah.
I've never seen anything like that.
I just...
It was really cool.
Most people have a hard time getting their dog just to come here.
I was going to say, I'm...
And it's amazing.
The, the dogs were better trained than my children were.
He has fewer dogs than you have children, though, so you have a bye.
Yeah, he's trying, he's one, it's one-on-one, that's...
Yeah.
I think my question was, is close to Will's. Your goals for coming up the next year?
Yeah, our goals consistently across the board, in fact, our, our current marketing and, or our business plan has specific goals under each category, and they have increased across the board. A website is pivotal to any marketing plan, in fact, everything you do within marketing should always direct people back to a, to a website, so that's where a big part of our focus is going to go. And kind of in, in response to Elaine's question, I had a bunch of meetings all afternoon, but we always try to keep the admin costs between 33 and 35%, which is considered best practices, which is stated in our contract to follow. But we're looking, it's interesting, our marketing, it used to be so print-driven, and so now we're really trying to switch that to be more digital, because that's a lot easier to be able to track, to be able to understand the effectiveness, to be able to interact more with those that you're trying to bring to your community. So really, our goals are to find ways to interact closer with our visitors and potential visitors. That's not necessarily what's been considered the marketing trend of the past, it's definitely the marketing trend of the future, for instance, the, the crowd riff, the pictures that we have here.
Well, and the trends that you put in your report, I, you can get that from the digital, you can't necessarily get that from a print.
Exactly.
You can actually see what investments are worth investing in again, or, no, this didn't work out as much, or do we need to tweak it, whereas you don't get that if you're doing just a paper.
Yeah, it's been tough, I mean, there's been, I've been doing this a long time, and there's certain people we've worked with for a lot of years to have to say, you know, we, we enjoy what you do, and we think that it has a certain amount of value, but we cannot prove that, we cannot see it, we just cannot track it, so we're going to have to go a different direction, and so you either have to kind of stay up with that, or you're going to get left behind.
Yeah. I did really like your email mailing today, Visit Stillwater.
Oh!
I did, too.
It's very, it's very attractive, very, very easy.
Thank you.
Jessica, very nice.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, trustees? Kristy, anything else you want to tell us?
Oh, I could tell you all kinds of stuff.
Well, it is past your staff's bedtime, so...
That's right. No, but we really do, we embrace, we love talking to civic clubs, organizations, any group like that who would like to hear. We even spoke to a group at the library last, or the week before last about retiring in Stillwater, and I will tell you, it's really interesting, they wanted us to come talk about why is Stillwater a good place to retire. It's the exact same reason Stillwater's a good place to go to college, or be a visitor, or live, I mean, it's the exact same thing, so it was, it was a fun conversation, but if you do, if you're involved in any of those groups or know of any, we would love to, to be a speaker at any, any programs.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
And thank you to all of you. Oh dear, I've lost this agenda.
Good, that'll lose it.
Yeah, right at the end. Reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
No report, ma'am.
Trustees? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second? I do hear a second.